Unfortunately.
Good afternoon, and welcome everyone to Spokane City Council's briefing session. Ms. Fister, will you call the roll?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. We're glad to have Mr. Jones back with us for today. He says he thinks he remembers what he's supposed to do.
I don't know if I do. I'll give it my best shot.
We will help you.
So we're going to start with the current agenda for November 25th. In my notes, it looks like we do have one proposed amendment under the legislative agenda for the Resolution 2024-0110 with the accompanying ordinance, and this is a Zepone? Zepone Proposed Amendment. There we go. Nailed it.
I mean, actually, you requested deferral for that one. That's the Vista Apartments, is that right?
That is.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so I moved to defer for one week to December 2nd.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And this was just by request of the administration. They are trying to get some of the technical language left.
Well, yeah, I guess I would like to understand what exactly is the concern. This is a pretty, pretty big deal, so, and nobody's talked to us.
So Melissa Owen from Planning Development. We just have some minor adjustments to the actual developer agreement to account for the status of the terms and conditions of the former developer agreement, so the 21 Developer Agreement. We just wanted to make sure that we had those statuses most up to date as we could. They're very close to having everything ready to go and even a plat authorized for signature and printing. We just wanted to be as accurate as possible.
Okay. So we're not trying to impose something new or unexpected, or?
No, it's really to show that they've met terms and conditions of the prior contracts so we can actually pull those out.
Okay.
So there's a motion and a second for deferral for one week till December 2nd. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Abstentions? That is deferred.
And that looks to be the only amendment or change I have on tonight's agenda.
That is correct. All those in favor of tonight's agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We need a motion.
I need a motion? A motion? I'll take a motion. All right. All those in...
Can you second, Jonathan?
Second.
Did you second it?
Jonathan, can you second?
Second.
Okay. Thanks a lot, Guy. Since you brought it up.
All those in favor.
Sorry, discussion on this. I was just really enjoying you being alone on an island there for a minute, so.
Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Abstentions? Tonight's agenda is approved. On to the advanced agenda, please.
All right, advanced agenda for December 2nd. Moving into consent items, we have item number one that'll be briefed by Rick Giddings.
Good afternoon. This item one is a purchase of a Caterpillar 305 mini excavator for the Water Department from Western States Equipment using a Sourcewell contract. Total for this $91,051.46. We actually got the quote and the briefing paper attached wrong to this, so we'll have to do an amendment to this and we'll work with Chris and Jacoby to get that squared away by Wednesday. Any questions?
Amendment as in cost?
No, we just attached the wrong excavator to this on base. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Rick.
Thanks.
Number two, this one will be briefed by Kyle Arrington.
Good afternoon, Council. Item number two is a request to approve a five-year value blanket to Universe Solutions for sodium hydroxide for the Riverside Park Water Reclamation Facility. It's from January 1st, 25 to December 31st, 2030, and it's for $172,995 plus tax.
Any questions?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Item number three, this one will be briefed by Lauren Searle.
Good afternoon, Council. This item is purchase of clay valve repair parts. These are the internal mechanisms in our pressure-reducing valves. We have about 150 of these around the city that we rebuild every year. This is a purchase for Ferguson for a total of $135,742. Any questions? Excellent.
Thanks, Lauren. Item number four, this one will be briefed by Clint Harris.
Good afternoon, Council President, Council. The Street Department's seeking approval to renew a state contract for purchase of liquid de-icer to cost not to exceed 1.5 million annually.
Clint, was this in addition to, I thought we had just approved some other de-icer salt items.
You did. You approved the salt. This is a liquid de-icer product.
All right. Thanks, Clint. Now, we have items five through 13. All of these items will be briefed by David Payne.
Good afternoon, Council President, Council members. The first item is a value blanket renewal three of four with Corbett NOR activated carbon out of Marshall, Texas. This material's used in our emissions control system. The contract runs from January 1st, 2025 to December 31st, 2025 with an annual cost not to exceed $105,000 plus tax. The next is renewal two of three with Anatech Labs, Inc. of Spokane, Washington for as-needed analytical testing services for the waste energy facility and landfills from November 1st, 2024 to October 31st, 2025 with an annual cost not to exceed $50,000 plus tax. The next item is a contract renewal three of four with HydroTech Generator Repair Plus, Inc., formerly known as Hydraulics Plus of Spokane Valley for off-site rebuild of cylinders from January 1st, 2025 to December 31st, 2025. Total cost not to exceed $100,000 plus tax. The next item is a contract renewal two of four with Deco, Inc. of Raleigh, North Carolina for air emissions compliance testing at the waste energy facility from January 1st, 2025 to December 31st, 2025 with a total cost not to exceed $145,000 plus tax. The next item is a five-year contract with Cannon Motors, Inc. of Spokane Valley, Washington for the as-needed off-site motor reconditioning from January 1st, 2025 to December 31st, 2029. Total cost not to exceed $245,000 plus tax or $49,000 annually. The next item is a five-year contract with online cleaning of Marysville, California for boiler blast cleaning services from January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2029. The total cost of this contract is not to exceed $1,775,000 plus tax with an approximate annual spend of $355,000. The next item is a five-year contract with ProDynamics Solutions LLC of Spokane for as-needed repairs of off-site rebuilt gearboxes at the waste energy facility. This contract runs from January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2029 with a total cost of $245,000 plus tax or approximately $49,000 annually. The next item is a five-year contract with WareTech, Inc. of Spokane for as-needed grate block cleaning services at the waste energy facility. This contract runs from January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2029 for a total cost not to exceed $210,000 plus tax or $42,000 annually. And the last item I have is a contract with Atlas Copco LLC of Arlington, Washington for the as-needed rental services of compressors for the waste energy facility to be used during our normal outage maintenance timeframes from January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025 with a total cost not to exceed $150,000 plus tax. Any questions? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, David. We have item number 14. This one will be briefed by Megan DuVall.
Good afternoon, Council. At the risk of having to have my name changed to Eldon Brown, I would ask for another deferral for this one. Sorry, Eldon, at your expense. The county hasn't finalized their budget yet, so we have not gotten anything firm on our contract with them. And usually what happens is the county, they approve the contract first and then you get the contract after that. So maybe the first meeting in 2025, if someone's willing.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Somebody gave me a date on the first, what was the first? Jacoby, what's the first meeting?
January 6th.
January 6th.
Make the motion to defer this item until January 6th.
Second.
It's been moved to second to defer till January 6th, 2025. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Abstentions? That is deferred. Thank you, Megan.
Thanks, Megan. I like that. Anytime we can get Eldon in the conversation.
Thank you, men. Thank you, men, Eldon, yeah.
I love it. We have item number 15. This one will be briefed by Corn.
Thank you, Council. This is a request to extend by one year in our local agreement that we have with Spokane County. They process all of our check payments, money orders, cashier's checks, anything in the form of paper. And we have had this in our local agreement since 2017, and we're looking to extend out one year not to exceed $65,000.
Now, again, I'm 37. I haven't used a ton of checks. Do we still get a large percentage of folks who are giving us checks and money orders?
The bulk of the checks we receive are through banks and credit unions. They're bill payer services.
Thank you.
Yeah. So we're trying to move towards establishing those connections with financial institutions so that we can accept more payments via electronically, but it's a connection between the bank and treasury.
And do we get a, do we believe that we get a better value going through the county treasurer than some sort of private processor?
Absolutely. So years ago, we had a full-time employee, and I promoted the employee, and the machine that we use took up an entire room, not kidding. And it got to where we couldn't get pieces and parts for it anymore. And to replace that type of equipment and have a full-time employee, and our check volume was drastically going down before COVID, and then it started to come up again. So I monitored that very closely, as well as the cost, and we did bring down the cost a few years ago when we extended the last time because check volume had gone down. With the treasury, treasurer in flux right now for the county, they just asked to go with one year, and then they'll reevaluate.
So they will reevaluate, or we will be reevaluating as well?
We would like to continue the partnership, as do they. I work very closely with Krista Rice, their operations manager over there, but because they will have someone new at the helm, that they wanted to wait and see, to have them weigh in on how long or cost to extend. So I will be coming back to council this next fall in 2025. This expires on December 31st each year.
You have a question?
All right. Thanks, Corn.
Thank you.
Item number 16, this will be briefed by Dan Bowler.
Good afternoon. Item 16 is a proposed amendment to the design contract with parametrics for the design of Fish Like Trail Phase 1. The proposed $40,000 amendment would cover the cost of the consultant to acquire property to avoid several signal pole replacements, additional cultural resource review, and traffic counting, which is necessary for some signal timing modifications, like we discussed in Pies last week. While the design would be ready to go in '25, we're waiting for a grant opportunity in the fall, a substantial one, and so construction's not planned until 2026.
Thank you, Dan. Now, moving into the legislative agenda, we have resolutions and final reading ordinances. Starting with resolutions, we have Resolution 2024-0111. This will be briefed by Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, thank you. We heard this in Pies last week. This would be supporting state legislation from the Department of Financial Institutions to put more protections around crypto kiosks, which are located across the city of Spokane.
Thanks. Which we just heard is on our legislative agenda.
Yeah. I can take the next one. So this is a resolution supporting extending the comment period for the Department of Natural Resources property that is off of Thorpe Road.
Okay, perfect. Then we have Resolution 2024-01113. This is going to be briefed by Marsha Davis.
Good afternoon, Council President, Council members. I have a brief presentation on the general facility update for 2025. So every year, we look at the inflation for the past year to determine how much we need to inflate our GFC costs. So we use the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index, and last year, the inflation was 0.99%. And when we add up what that means, right now, you can see the chart for the 5/8 inch. It's $1,667 for this year rate, and it'll be, next year, it'll be $1,683. Of course, we have all the different sizes that all have new rates. And then for sewer, also, we've inflated that by the 0.99%, and that's it.
I, again, I'm just excited that it's less than 1%. I think that's fantastic. We put a lot of work into this, and I'm glad to see that it's not going crazy with COVID. A lot of materials got really expensive, so to see that coming down to 1% is exciting, so.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Okay. So, thank you.
Thanks, Marsha. Next, we have Resolution 2024-0114. This one's me. So, as we discussed in Pies at the Park Board Full Meeting, November 14th, the Park Board did request that the City Council indefinitely defer the Citywide Park Improvement and Safety Levy until a later date in 2025 to align with future partnerships between the City of Spokane and Spokane Public Schools. So right now, Spokane Public Schools and the Parks Department are conducting a study to look at, really, the smart government initiatives around partnerships, programs, infrastructure, as far as what type of opportunities that we'd be able to leverage to have a greater impact to the public, that we'd be coming back early in 2025 of what those results are, back to our elected boards and on each side and the City Council to get recommendations on next steps of placing a ballot measure later in 2025. Okay. And then we have Ordinance C36120. Here comes Eldon.
Welcome, Mr. Brown.
Good afternoon. I'm probably going to pull that actual vacation ordinance for right now. Reason being is we just got a contact with Finley Auto in Henderson, Nevada. They have one lot that's adjacent to this property, just on the south side of the VOA, and their attorney's reached out to me, and I'm trying to communicate back and forth here. We need to bring them into the loop on this thing before we finalize the agreement. So I want to pull it somewhat indefinitely, but I intend to bring it back the minute we get national agreement with people on there, including this one lot. We've been trying to get this contact with this lot for about a year and a half now. It went from Spokane, from Larry H. Miller, down to Anoutfit in Georgia, and now it's went to Las Vegas on this lot. But we do have a contact now, and so I just want to not put it on the docket till we actually got them in agreement with what we're trying to do on both sides of the road. So that's what I'm here for, is just to pull it off right now indefinitely without scheduling, and I'll bring it back when we've really got something to finalize. Any questions?
Before I take that motion, I would like you to really speak to what Washdott is doing. They have really come through on their commitment on that property.
Yeah, they contacted me about doing that here. Must have been about a month ago. So happy to see that they did that with their fencing.
There's actually fencing back there now, so, all right.
I'll make a motion to defer Ordinance C36120 indefinitely.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second to defer indefinitely. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Abstentions?
No.
Okay. No? That was deferred. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Eldon. And then we have Ordinance C36609 to the 6614. That'll be considered under hearings. And then we have Ordinance C36615. I do not see Donna here, but Tammy will brief this one.
Good afternoon. Talked about this a little bit last week. Are there any additional questions?
Could you just talk a little bit about the caps and meters? Because I know we just increased the fees on those through the Water Department, and so I'm just trying...
I'm on the rezone for Donna.
That's the office retail.
Oh, got it. Okay.
But I can't answer that one question.
When we get to 619, that'll be my question.
All right. I think we're good on that one. Thank you.
All right. And then we have the next two ordinance will be considered under hearings. And then moving into first reading ordinances, we have Ordinance C36618. I do not see Matt or... Here comes Adam.
Yeah, this ordinance just removes the December 31st, 2024 expiration date on the utility tax on water wastewater and solid waste.
Thanks, Adam. All right, Tammy. I think this is the next one. So C36619?
So Steve and I are going to just kind of do the basic introduction because Steve won't be able to join us on the 5th when we have study session with council. He'll be at a cabinet retreat. So wanted to go into just some, like, why we're here, a little bit of the background, and then we'll launch into everything on the 5th, and I will answer your question. So DSC is an enterprise fund. We're not supported by the general fund, so our fees and charges are what pays for our man-hours, our labors, our staff, our overhead. We have not raised rates for any of the development fees since 2008. We did look at the elevators, and we're not proposing any changes to those right now, so we're mindful of that. You know, CPI has increased 46.5% in those 16 years. Wage inflation is 64.8%. So we're taking this into account. We're really trying to look at our cost of service and making sure that we're on target. There's some fees that we're not proposing to change because we felt we were pretty close to that cost of service already. So again, trying to look at this line item by line item. You know, our costs as a city, as everybody's reviewing the budgets, have gone up just like the private sector. So we need to make sure that we're recovering our costs and that we're setting ourselves up to add and be able to support the addition of additional employees as well. So this, again, like I said, this, these fees, these are not the building valuation fees that are set by the ICC table. Those are published biannually, and we adopt those by reference when they're updated. So these are really like our trade permits, our electrical, our plumbing, our mechanical. We looked at some of the land use. We've got some of Megan's historic preservation fees in there as well. And so just kind of giving you that background of what we're really focusing on.
Good afternoon. I will tell you, in the three-plus years that I've been here, I've heard many complaints about the length of time to get permits through the system and very few, like a handful in the three years, about cost. And that's normally about things other than permits, what we're talking about now. You will see when we have the finished report, the type of things, just to kind of underline what Tammy was talking about. We're talking about items like an electrical outlet or a plumbing device, that those increases are being added to those. And this is really something that's paying for labor, which, of course, our labor has gone up quite a bit. Allowing, you know, adjusting our permit fees will allow us to increase staff and efficiency and have better throughput through the system. And I have to tell you, the way it's been, we have not been able to add staff until just recently, and in the 2025 budget, we are adding staff carefully to allow for quicker response, and our new permit software system will do the same thing. I believe that we will be able to add additional staff down the road when we find out how this first wave of new hires works and how the new permitting software works as well. But the one thing I wanted to really make clear is that with us not having been able to add staff, it's really been unfair to our staff. They've worked really hard through five consecutive years of record numbers of permits, and it's been unfair to our customers because, you know, time is money, and they're wanting their projects to go through as quickly as possible. So we're committed to doing that carefully by adding selective staff and then coming back to you every year for that, for that increase that's going to be based on a CPI index as well. 16 years is a long time, and we don't want to be in this position again to have to come forward and ask for increases rather than just adjusting them in micro amounts based on CPI.
Steve stole my thunder, but this is some of the language that we're looking at. So we will be going off of the CPI, the CPIU for urban and CPIW for wages. So these are based on the average, the previous three-year average, not... There's a cap on there as well, and I think when I was talking to our consultant, some of the other jurisdictions it uses, it's 4.49, but again, as you saw with Marsha's, we're hoping that's much, much lower. But, so these are what we're going to do, and I'm also saying that we present this back to you every year. So when we come for those, just like Marsha did, when we come for those yearly adjustments, we'll bring them back to you so that you have eyes on it. Now you can ask your question.
Just trying to understand the taps and meters and the difference between the fees from the Water Department versus the fees that are here.
The only thing that we're changing in taps and meters is the processing fee because the DSC actually does that work. We process those permits, and so we're bringing that processing fee in line with all of our other standard processing fees.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And why did we choose the CPI for the index?
This was the recommendation from our consultant. This was the recommendation from our consultant based on when they do fee studies across the state.
Yeah. Because we had discussed when we were doing GFCs, we had discussed CPI, but ENR made a lot more sense because CPI includes like eggs, you know? And so I'm just trying to figure out if that's the right one.
Yeah. So the CPI that we've chosen includes a wage inflation, as you noted. For that 16 years, there was inflation, and then there was wage inflation. They're a little bit different. And what we're actually paying for, or what the customer is paying for, is labor, basically, through review or inspections, right? It's less so a typical CPI that's specific to engineering work, like what Public Works is doing. They're using the right one for them because their projects are based on, you know, engineering costs and machinery and equipment, and that, whereas ours are really kind of based on labor. And so we've made sure to include that labor component for our CPI index.
Awesome. One more question. So I know that we had that fund, that we found all this money, and money is going in there every year. With that money, is that money still going to be going into that account? Or is that money that's going to be used differently?
Over my dead body will go in there. Because really, that's what's happened is, in a sense, money was swept out, and there wasn't anything malicious going on here. It was a misunderstanding of a Government Accounting Standards Board, and it went on through three different administrations, or at least two. So it wasn't anything there. But the point is, they were sweeping that money out, and by sweeping that money out and then further not allowing us to hire people, that was making us get further and further behind on this. So that money is not going into that account anymore. It stopped some time ago. And we have a nice cushion in case we need to adjust either more capital or at different times. We really want the fee increase to stay even so that that's paying for additional staff. It's not a good idea to use that revenue of that one-time thing for hiring.
And my question wouldn't be about the reserve, but the amount of money that's now no longer being swept in there, I'm assuming is going to be a part of your budget. And so was that taken into account when you were looking at fees?
Yes.
Did that adjust the amount that the fee would be increased, or was it just like that's also just an extra increase for us?
That money is not being swept in there. It hasn't been for, I believe, a while. I'd have to double-check if it was last year, but it's not going forward, so. I'd have to get back to you on that.
It was used to hire the four positions that we added in the SPO last month or the month before. But again, those four new positions were taken into...
Sorry, Tammy, would you do it in the microphone there? Sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry. So it was, we did use that to add those four positions. The fee study accounted for that. So moving forward to make those sustainable positions, the fees are accounting for those additional positions.
And then we use some of it for the software.
Some of it's being used to pay for the LAMA implementation. So DSC is paying all of the implementation costs, so that's not being spread out to the other general fund accounts. So they'll have their portion moving forward of the yearly cost and maintenance, but it is actually less than what we were paying for Exela, but DSC is covering the implementation costs.
Quick question. So how does this kind of interface with some of that Department of Commerce funding that was recently awarded?
We, so I did get that grant, the 375, and that's being used for the implementation costs as well. So just being able to augment that so we're not, but again, it's not coming out of any general fund.
Councilman McCattcar.
Yeah, to Steve's point at the start of this, you know, one of the big complaints is how long it takes to get permits and to get development going. And as we're talking about, you know, just big ideas that can affect the, you know, the value and price of land, you know, the timeline to get your permits is going to become pretty critical. And so do we expect that through this, we're going to be able to reach the two-week goal that we had established two years ago?
I am hopeful, but we have to get caught up, and we have to get people trained to be in that position. So we did just bring on another plans reviewer in building where we have a planner one starting December 9th, and we have an engineer tech four starting December 2nd. So again, as we add the bodies, and our other hope is that through implementing this new permitting system, there's going to be a lot of efficiencies. A lot of the routing will be automated. So again, that frees up tech time that they can be doing those residential reviews. So they kind of all add and build on each other. So my goal is, yes, we've got to get our timelines down. We recognize that.
It's probably one of the biggest things we could do to increase growth in the city rather than outside the city, is to improve that process internally, so.
And the other good thing about LAMA is it's going to show us in black and white in an accurate fashion how long it's taking to process things. Right now, we can't spend the time and money it would take to make the adjustments to get, you know, unreliable information out of Exela about how long processing is taking. It's nearly impossible. So that will be a big help. And then, you know, as Tammy mentioned, additional staff. We've also done some other things. We're starting a pilot case management program, which we hope to formalize next year. We are making a change in having somebody move into the division, in my division, actually, to help with operations. Their sole focus is going to be working initially with DSC and to a degree with parking to help with efficiencies. I just don't have the time to be involved at that level. So there's a number of different things that we're doing that I think will be helpful. But the point will be, we'll be able to tell by the kind of reports that we're able to get out of the new software. And that's going to be transparent and on our website, and that's the thing that will hold our feet to the fire.
Thank you.
Just to add just a little bit to that, too, when it relates to the fee study, once we get LAMA implemented, because it does have that time tracking option or availability, we'll know a much better idea of how much actual staff time and which hands are touching which permits. So that's where I'd like to come back and revisit the fees and make sure that we really, truly are doing a true cost of service recovery. So probably about 18 months after we implement that, I think that's a good range of data that we can kind of go through this process again and just true up and make sure that, I mean, maybe our prices will come down on some things. But just want to make sure, put that out there so that you know that, once we get better data, we want to go through this process again.
And we're going to get a study session presentation on all this as well, correct?
Yep. You have 90 minutes with me on the 5th and our consultants.
And so just to be just clarity, in your presentation up there, it will come before council every year. So 18 months will be past our yearly review, so something will be by that time before the 18 months.
Yeah, we would imagine for the next yearly update, using the CPI index. And it takes about a year to go through a true fee study, so it's slightly painful.
All right. Anything else? Thank you, Ms. Tammy. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Now, moving into hearings, we have Hearing One and Two. Will be briefed by Amanda Beck.
Thanks, Jacobi. Good afternoon, council. Man, I feel like it's been a really long time since I've been up here.
Aspen?
Yeah. Thanks. So it's that time of year again when we talk about the annual assessments for the business improvement districts. This is just a high level on the December 2nd public hearing. You'll actually hear from both of the bid managers. So this just goes through the procedural requirements that we have to meet by this date. And since every year that I've done this, I think there's always at least one new person on council. It'll be a repeat for some of you. So first step is we have to establish the hearing date by resolution. Y'all did that back in September. The next item is behind the scenes. I work with the bid managers and their staff to come up with the rules to make sure that we have all the property information correct, we have the owner contact information, their lot square footage. All of that stuff is checked and put together as the formal rule that you will vote on at the December 2nd public hearing. Those need to be available for the rate payers. Those are the people who pay the assessment in for the bid, so they can view it ahead of the public hearing. So those were posted through the clerk's office on November 1st. And then the last official step is to send a mailer to all of the rate payers and notify them. The public hearing is December 2nd. Please come. Here are your bid managers, all of that information. And it gives them a preliminary notice of what their assessment will be. And then through the Treasury Department, they will get a notice of their actual assessment and how to pay. And they will need to pay either in one lump sum, January 31st, or they can do two payments, one in January and one in June. Funny that we should all be talking about CPI, but CPI is also a factor for the bids. So their formulas both have an inflationary factor that is tied to Consumer Price Index. And that kind of has an impact on, generally, it goes up a little bit every year, but it'll have an impact on what their benefit zones are and their little deacrities for each one. So for example, the downtown bid has four benefit zones. Their assessment is broken, it's kind of a unique beast. It's broken into two components. So we look at tenants, and then we look at property owners. Property owners are pretty simple. We look at their total assessed value from the Spokane County Assessor, and then it's a flat rate depending on their zone and the type of entity they are. So we charge the public parks in Zone Four differently than, say, office or retail in Zone One. The tenants, this is really based on their lease square footage. This is very tricky. And so every year, the Downtown Spokane Partnership staff deserve a shout out for the massive amount of outreach and culling through information that this requires to verify someone's lease hasn't changed, they haven't done a tenant improvement, that they're actually occupied, because when people go out of business, they don't need to notify any of us. But it certainly helps for them because if a suite is empty in a building, that is bid revenue that they are not collecting to provide services. So this year, we have just over 1,000 tenants, which is amazing because last year, I think there were three more. So that's a very small percentage change. I think that's due to DSP staff being so thorough in developing that tenant assessment role, and also hopefully, we've seen a little bit of a slowdown in the business changeover from COVID. And then we have almost 600 properties in the bid downtown. The East Spring Bed has three benefit zones, mostly centered along the Spring Avenue corridor. Their assessment formula, totally different. We combine their lot square footage, and it's purely based on property owners. We look at their lot square footage, and then we look at the total assessed value from the assessor as well. It focuses more on the lot square footage than on the assessed value. And then they similarly have different rates for those zones. So same thing, working with the East Spokane Business Association, as was the manager for the East Spring Bed. We have kept the roles consistent, and every year that I do this with them, we implement process improvements. It's a really tricky process, and so there's always hiccups and things each year. But I'm glad that we're making it a little bit better every year. One thing of note, I believe this came up back in September when we were talking, or no, excuse me, in October, when we were talking about the ordinances themselves. So the East Spring Bed has a three-year cycle for their formula. Every three years, we update the base year from the Spokane County Assessor for the total assessed value that we're looking at. So for assessments in 2025, the year that got updated to was 2024. Obviously, we know that property values have increased a lot over the last couple of years. So this is a boon in the respect that they have seen a huge increase in the cost of services that they provide to their rate payers. And so hopefully, this is going to give them a little bit more of a cushion and also allow them to expand the services that their rate payers would like to see. So, public hearing December 2nd, both of the bid managers will be there. I will leave time for them to speak so they can tell you about the great things they did this year and what they plan to do next year. And you will get a chance to vote on their management plans, their budgets, and the assessment role for each of the organizations. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Then we have Hearing Three. This one has a A through F. So this, I think, is going to be a team effort. We're going to start with Brandon.
Hoping to make this brief, and I will be taking all six, from CPIs to CPAs. We have six comprehensive plan amendments this year. All six were briefed at study session a few weeks ago. The only new public comments we have received were for the South Locan implementation proposal, which were sent to you this morning. Any questions? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That was quick. And then just Hearing Number Four is a continuation of the hearing for the budget, and that concludes the advanced agenda.
I'll entertain a motion for approval. Oh, yes, Councilman Bigglesby.
I was going to slow clap for him, but I decided not to.
All right. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the advanced agenda.
It's a move.
Been moved in a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? Abstentions, that is approved. We are in recess until 6:00 PM.